Like to welcome everyone to the regular town council meeting. We are in council chambers and we are available via Zoom. Could I please have a roll call? Clark?
Yeah. Your cue, Miss Diana.
Uh.
She's frozen. Frozen. We're gonna go to deputy.
Would you just call out the names of the council, just call out the names of the counselors?
Present.
She is excused. Here. He is excused as well.
Here.
Here.
Here. Thank you. Would everyone rise, please uncover and recite the pledge of allegiance with me?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, are there any, any adjustments to the agenda?
Um, due to the absence of our assessor, we're gonna seek to have presentation and rate related orders section out of order. Seek to have those table this evening.
Thank you. And could I have the approval for the minutes of June eighth, June twenty second and July thirteenth?
So moved second.
Motion made by Councilor Bragden, seconded by Councilor Madore. All those in favor? Five zero. Like the manager said, we're gonna move past the special presentation. We're gonna move on to order number two twenty dash twenty twenty three, Council Madore, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order two twenty dash twenty twenty three, providing for commitment of the FY twenty four property taxes. It is ordered that fiscal year twenty twenty four property taxes be committed in the due date for the first payment. First half payment is thirty days after the commitment date.
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Council Madore.
I move that this order be tabled till the next meeting.
Second again.
Thank you. Motion made by Council Madore, seconded by Council Bragden. All those in favor? Five zero. Motion's tabled. Council Bragden, would you please read order number two twenty one?
Order number two twenty one dash twenty twenty three, providing for setting the mill rate for fiscal year twenty four. It is ordered that the Melanocca Town Council set the FY twenty four mill rate at blank percent.
Second.
Motion made by Council Bragden, seconded by Council Madore. Yes, Council Bragden?
I move that we table two twenty one to the next meeting.
Motion made by Councilor Bragden, seconded by Council Madore. All those in favor? Five zero. Order number two twenty two dash twenty twenty three, Council Madore, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order two twenty two dash twenty twenty three, providing for setting the interest rate for FY twenty four delinquent tax. The rate for FY twenty four delinquent tax is set at eight percent. Interest shall begin from first half taxes on the thirty first day after the state ban. It is further ordered that the interest rate for FY twenty four delinquent sewer fees be set at the same rate as the FY twenty four delinquent tax.
Second.
Motion made by Council Madore, seconded by Council Bragden. Council discussion on this order?
Chairman?
Council Madore.
As you can see by the table on the following page, uh, the eight percent is not out of line of any interest that we've said in previous dates other than twenty twenty one. Uh, it follows suit what we can do. Uh, I'm sure you write about where the ballpark range is, so I think it should be fine going forward.
Thank you, Council Madore. Uh, I as well, uh, when I was past tax collector, have seen them seven, eight, nine percent. So it is well within the ballpark of where some communities are, where we have been in the past. Any other council discussion? Seeing none down to the public? Via Zoom, back to the council. All those in favor? Five zero. Council Bragden, would you please read order number two twenty three?
Order number two twenty three dash twenty twenty three, providing for interest rate for overpayment of taxes. It is ordered that the Melanocca Town Council set the fiscal year twenty four interest rate for overpayment of taxes at four percent. Note subsection five oh six A overpayment of taxes allows the municipality to reduce the interest rate for the overpayment of taxes by four percentage points of what it charges for interest rate of delinquent taxes.
Motion made by Council Bragden, seconded by Council Madore. Council discussion on this order? Seeing none down to the public?
Oh.
Via Zoom.
Would be zero.
Back to the council. All those in favor? What was that?
Overpayment, but you would be expecting to have a zero. Uh. Uh.
Did you have a council discussion that we moved past?
Me?
Well, I had asked that this section be tabled. So.
All the whole section?
Um, this is all on.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move this order to the next town council meeting.
You'll have to state that that be tabled.
Okay.
Why? Able to raise the rate or without a delinquency, this is simply an overpaying.
Yeah, we're just on the.
If taxes are paid ahead and there's an overpayment, it's a great.
Yep. So our intention there would have been to set the overpayment interest rate at zero.
If I may interject, if you can hear.
Please do.
My understanding um of this, if you guys just approved the eight percent of the interest, um, as the interest of overpayment actually is not on, it would be on any prepayments, like if somebody was assessed inappropriately. Um, and they were not supposed to receive an assessment, then it would be um a reimbursement with that four percent if they made the payment. And I believe the statute is, as it says in the note, that the four percentage is of that eight percent that you guys just approved. So a four deduction of the four is the balance of four, not zero.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, uh, hey, feel free to move forward.
Are you unclear, Council Madore? Have that?
No.
Yeah. So are we not, did you still want to table it or not?
Uh, no, go for it.
Okay, I redact my motion.
Okay, back to the original vote. All those in favor? Five zero. Um, town managers report, are we?
I'm just gonna give a brief update this evening. Um, we say we loosely, I don't know. Um, uh, um, some of our staff and uh, together with some community volunteers and folks from the library have uh, are coordinating the candidate tonight for our upcoming election. Um, they've landed on October second uh, from uh, six PM to eight PM. That'll be at the Sterns High School Library as it was last year. And we'll have Mr. Wally Paul as the facilitator for that event. Uh, participants in that candidate's night discussion uh, for the town council, Jane Danforth, Gail Macken, Louis Pelletier, Hilda Stratton. Um, and anticipating and on the ballot for the school board will be Adore Huke, Tom Malcolm, and Donald Lehman. Brief update for, I think, we can look forward to that event. I will also add that should anyone have some uh, questions related to um, the tabled orders earlier that they would like to address, be um, next couple of weeks, feel free to reach out. Happy to explain some of what goes into that process and, and range of what we're expecting. Um, so, so, yeah.
Thank you, Miss Manager. Council discussion on the manager's report? I would. Thank you. I, what I was saying is on top of um, what the manager said, I would also like to extend an invitation to all the applicants to um, attend council meetings and familiarize themselves with processes and maybe familiarize yourself with some of the issues that some of the council and the town of Melanocca are going through. So I would extend that welcoming invite to attend council meetings to any of the prospective candidates. Um, with that, I'll say thank you. And to the public on the manager's report. Via Zoom. Seeing none. Thank you very much for your interest report. Moving on to order two fourteen dash twenty twenty three, Council Madore, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order two fourteen dash twenty twenty three, providing for execution of the town warrant for September fourteenth, twenty twenty three. It is ordered that the town warrant for September fourteenth, twenty twenty three in the amount of one hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and forty five cents hereby approved.
Second.
Motion made by Council Madore, seconded by Council Bragden. Council Madore, are there any heavy hitters on?
Oh, there's a few in here. We got uh, four thousand, three hundred and fifty one dollars and sixty six cents to Dead River, that is diesel fuel. Uh, two thousand, six hundred and thirty one dollars and eighteen cents to Design Lab, that is for our communication contract. Uh, nine thousand, six hundred and eighty five dollars and sixty four cent.
Financial services, credit card, um, credit card, six thousand dollars uh, to Town Area Television Incorporated, that is asked through for public access. At the fee, uh, fifteen hundred dollars uh, for the Knights of Columbus, that is for the monument restoration in the cemetery. Uh, two thousand, six hundred dollars, nine cents, technology group. Where that uh, third, seven thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty six cents, water company, that is hybrid rental. Teen thousand, three hundred and fifty one dollars and fifty three cents to mainest main waste solution, uh, is waste removal. And fifteen hundred dollars to our HR smithing company, that has to do with.
Council Madore. Any other council discussion on this order? Seeing none down to the public? Via Zoom, back to the council. All those in favor? Five zero. Order number two fifteen dash twenty twenty three, Council Bragden, would you please read?
Order number two fifteen dash twenty twenty.
In the amount of two hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Second to my mic.
Motion made by Councilor Bragden, seconded by Council Madore. Council discussion on this order? Are there any heavy hitters?
Eight thousand, fifty dollars for roof repair, one hundred and thirty nine thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy eight cents for wastewater bond. Uh, fifty three thousand, eight hundred and fifty six dollars is for the pumps for the pump station. Three thousand, three hundred and sixty six dollars and thirty cents is for, you said the reaters?
Yeah.
Okay. Three thousand, one hundred and eighty one dollars and thirteen cents is for the flusher tank use payments.
Thank you, Council Bragden. Any other council discussion on this order? Seeing none down to the public? Via Zoom, back to the council. All those in favor? Five zero. Order number two sixteen dash twenty twenty three, Council Madore, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order two sixteen dash twenty twenty three, providing for the execution of prior year town warrant for September fourteenth. It is ordered the prior year town warrant, September fourteenth, twenty twenty three, in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred dollars hereby.
Second.
Motion made by Council Madore, seconded by Council Bragden. Council discussion on this order?
Just one thing, Chairman, this has to be the purchasing of the fence for a dog park.
Thank you, Council Madore.
The place of fence for grant, uh, for.
Um, yeah, just the, just the fence repairs and around the.
Little bit quicker. Thank you.
Dog park.
Thank you. Any other council discussion on this order? Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none via Zoom. Back to the council. All those in favor? Five zero. Order number two seventeen dash twenty twenty three, Council Bragden, would you please read?
Order number two seventeen dash twenty twenty three, providing for approval of street closure for the Trails End Festival. It is ordered that the Melanocca Town Council grant approval for the closure of the following street and parking lots for the Trails End Festival, Friday, September twenty second. Close parking lot at Bandstand from seven AM and keep closed till seven PM on Sunday, September twenty third. Okay, uh, on Sunday, September twenty fourth. Uh, close Poplar Street from Penobscot Ave to Cataina Ave from noon on Friday, September twenty second till seven PM on Sunday, September twenty fourth. Have police officers to lead parade from Sterns High School across Second Streets to Penobscot Ave down to Veterans Park at ten AM on Saturday, September twenty third. Sunday, September twenty fourth, close municipal parking lot in Penobscot Ave from seven AM to two PM for touch truck. Close inside outgoing travel lane on Central Street Bridge from nine AM to eleven AM for the rubber dock race to address safety concerns with the crowd.
Motion made by Council Bragden, seconded by Council Madore. Council discussion on the order?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, the first, the second line is Friday, September twenty second, seven AM and keep closed till seven PM on Sunday, September twenty fourth.
Correct.
All right.
Any other discussion on the order? Seeing none down to the public? Via Zoom, back to the council. All those in favor? Five. Order number two eighteen dash twenty twenty three, Council McGowan, would you please read?
Order number one eight dash twenty twenty three, providing for approval of fuel bid award. It is ordered that the Melanocca Town Council accept the bid for heating fuel for the town of Melanocca for FY twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four from Preble Oil Company and approve the amount of three dollars and point two four eight oh four cents, point oh seven cents over Opus Bangor rack price as of Monday, September fourth, twenty twenty three. There were three bids received, Preble Oil Company. Three point two four eight oh four total price per gallon delivered, Dead River Company, three point six six one seven eight two total price per gallon delivered. CN Brown Energy, three point six two one one total price per gallon delivered.
Second.
Motion made by Council McGowan, seconded by Council Bragden. Council discussion on the order? Council Madore.
Uh, thank you.
Your mic's dead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh.
Again, I, I, I'm glad to see there were three bids. I think it's healthy to have three, you know, three or four bids on this going forward. And it's also very good to see that a local company that has been servicing Melanocca for so many years, again, has been the lower bid on this thing, so they'll be able to go ahead and have the contract. They've been very good with the town. Service has been good. They've provided a very fair price. So I'm glad it's going to Preble Oil and I thank them for placing it.
Thank you, Council Madore. Any other council comment? Seeing none down to the public? Via Zoom, back to the council. All those in favor? Five zero. Order number two nineteen dash twenty twenty three, Council Pelletier, would you please read?
Order number two nineteen dash twenty twenty three, providing for approval to expend American Rescue Plan Act funding. It is ordered that the Melanocca Town Council approves the use of forty thousand, forty thousand dollars of ARPA funding on the following expenses. Skeeto, half remaining project balance, twenty seven thousand, five hundred. Historical Society, ten thousand dollars. Fire Station Furniture, fifteen hundred dollars. Town Clerk, voter registration tent, one thousand dollars. Note, should this order pass, the remaining balance of the unallocated local ARPA fund, funding will be approximately thirty thousand dollars.
Motion made by Council Pelletier, seconded by Council Madore. Council discussion on this order? Council Bragden?
Just for clarification, if I'm asked, Fire Station Furniture, could you just elaborate?
Um, absolutely. So, um, members of the fire crew had come with a request for some new furniture. Um, I didn't go over to check out what they've been uh, dealing with, sleeping on and sitting in a rough shape, broken down, uh, so to a business offer on price for nice finders. Furniture over there and just to awesome.
Any other council discussion on the order? Down to Council Madore, please.
I, I see the veto.
Your mic.
This is.
Your mic.
What's that? I think with the veto, that uh, this will take care of.
Half the remaining balance, the balance being about fifty five thousand dollars. Uh, is there, do you have, or has our CID person have uh, the opportunity to grant funds in the wing? Hopefully, because I know they did the, the winter kids to get ten thousand. Is there a plan, I mean, I'd like to see this up and running sooner than later, that I think is a great project. I'd like to see this up and running sooner than later. Is there a framework to get the other seven thousand, five hundred? Well, for starters, we actually only need twenty two thousand, five hundred dollars uh, for half of the fences. So here's to be type out there. Um, the uh, so yes, the total project cost fifty five thousand. We did receive ten thousand dollars towards that total. Uh, so you're, um, I have a remaining uh, goal of forty five thousand dollars to beat um, the project total. Uh, so we do have an opportunity, we have uh, uh, we have an opportunity for funding that will uh, split the remaining balance with us. Uh, they want to see that we have um, skin in the game, if you will. Um, so should this order pass, we will uh, submit that application and feel very confident that we'll have a hundred percent of that project paid for very near. Um, I would disrecommend that we redo the math on this so that it's two thousand dollars. That is.
Thank you very much.
So, yes, Council Bragden?
Kind of ran a motion that we amend the order to veto half remaining balance of twenty thousand five.
Correct.
Motion made by Council Bragden, seconded by Council Pelletier. Any discussion on the amendment?
You'll wanna um.
Adjust the total as well, right?
Total.
Make it thirty five thousand?
Do you mind repeating the amendment because that was in and out for me?
I don't understand what she's saying.
The amendment was to change the Skeeto total to twenty two thousand, five hundred dollars.
Thank you.
And the total balance, I believe, is part of your amendment. The remaining balance of thirty five thousand, so it should read approves the use of thirty five thousand and Skeeto, half remaining project, twenty two thousand, five hundred.
Thank you.
Does that correctly reflect your amendment?
And that would also leave thirty five thousand, not allocated locally.
Correct.
Correct.
All right. So are we done discussing that amendment?
I believe so.
Okay. Let's have a vote on the amendment. All those in favor? Five zero on the amendment. Back to the order as amended. Any other council discussion? Down to the public. This would be an opportunity, if you wanted to speak on.
No pressure.
Am I on? Okay. My name is Rodney Guyon. Uh, I live at three eighteen Augusta Road in Topsom, Maine. So I do not live in town, but I was raised here and graduated in class seventy seven. And about almost two years ago, I was elected the president of the Melanocca Historical Society, which uh, helps to run the museum. Uh, which uh, is a nonprofit, obviously, and is totally run by volunteers who don't receive any financial compensation, nor do they expect to. But uh, over the years, it's been a struggle to keep the museum building, uh, operating, you know, besides the, the normal utilities and insurance and the mortgage and that stuff, just the building itself. You know, uh, the roof, the porch, uh, uh, the inside and the fixtures and all of that. And so, uh, we are, you know, seeking out any assistance to keep the building safe and up to code and uh, uh, available to the public. And uh, there's been an increase in, in visitors. Uh, they love coming in there. Um, I would invite the town council to please come and visit your museum. There's a lot of great artifacts in there, a lot of history on the town. Uh, and people continue to come back. Uh, we try to keep it fresh uh, with our displays. Um, and it's a wonderful asset for the town. We're trying to be more public with uh, community events that are going on. Uh, we have a wonderful monthly newsletter that goes out, which anyone is welcome to receive, to understand some of the things that are going on. Questions? From any of the council?
I do. Um, this ten thousand dollars, what does it mean to you and what does it assist you in doing?
Uh, mostly building, the, the structure of the building itself, where uh, you know, we've got some, some leaks when the porch was added. We need work uh, uh, to help finish the upstairs, the second floor. So, you know, not so much the utilities, that type of stuff, but we're looking to uh, the building itself. I mean, the whole backside of the building uh, needs uh, cosmetic work out there, which you can't see it from Central Street. It looks pretty bad. So.
I also noticed in the local publication newspaper that you guys also received monies from the county commissioner.
Yes.
This is a good collaboration, so good timing for.
Yes. Uh, the second floor is not accessible to the public. Uh, the access, the staircase doesn't meet code. And uh, we have an awful lot of artifacts in storage because we don't have a place to display them. And so, uh, you know, the generosity of the county with this ARPA money is gonna enable us to build a suitable staircase that meets code. So then we can, you know, open up the second floor. And uh, display a lot more uh, things that that uh, the public will really enjoy seeing. So, yeah, we're very excited about that. And uh, that project will begin around November. Um, we have someone to begin the staircase work. So hopefully we'll have access uh, for the public, certainly by the first of the new year.
Hopefully, the citizens of Melanocca and its visitors will take advantage of that. Any other council comment on this order? Council Madore?
Thank you. Uh, my wife and I have gone to the historical society and seen the uh, displays. And not only that, but the wonderful people who are volunteering there, who have been more than generous with their, their uh, knowledge and their personality. And it is, we are fortunate to have it. It's, it's a great, uh, a great piece of um, the Melanocca's history. And you guys do a great job at displaying and uh,
I, I would encourage anybody who has not been inside the Historical Society to please take a chance, take advantage of it. Uh, it is certainly a, a great step back as such to the early stages of our community and a lot of things that maybe even now people who lived during it have forgotten and will bring back memories.
I am here. I'm glad it's happening. I'm glad the town saved the help. It is a, like I say, great to have and it's something to be proud of. I've seen the historical society in other communities. It's not even fair to what you guys have done as far as the side with the places set up, where everything is done. I think.
Very welcome.
Thank you, Councilor.
May I say one more thing unrelated is uh I've traveled all over the country and one of my interests is uh genealogical research. So I've been to a lot of cemeteries around the country. And uh, I just wanted to say how wonderful it is to see what the town does to maintain our cemetery up here at Millinocket. It is a jewel and is well maintained. And it kind of weird, but it's one of my happy places just to go up there and, and, you know, contemplate and, and think about a lot of our town founders, you know, and, and ancestors are buried up there. And so what you're doing is wonderful. And I hope you'll continue. It's, it's.
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Here, also. Chief Cody, would you like to say anything about the other items that concern your department on this order? Are you good? Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor on the order as amended, five zero. Sports and Communications, the warrant committee for September twenty eighth, twenty twenty three will be Council McGowan and Council Pelleteer. Chair Committee reports.
Yes, the charter review committee will have its regular meeting Wednesday, September twentieth in the town manager's office.
Thank you, Council Pelleteer. Any other counsel? This is the two minute public comment section where anybody from the public is allowed to speak on any topic that they wish. Uh, you have two minutes to state your name and your address. You're welcome to speak to the council. Seeing none in the public and none via Zoom, looking for a motion. Motion made by Council Mador, seconded by Council McGowan for the adjournment. All those in favor? Four. All those opposed? Four one. Have a good weekend and a good evening.
Yeah. What he said.
Mr. Recording.
Andrew, you did a great job.
Peter, you're still recording.
Still recording, still recording.
Yes.